I will call this work session meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, October 15th. The time is 3:02 PM. Mr. Vina, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Prather.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Garza. Mayor Houston.
Uh, here.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Gleason.
Here.
Mr. Mendosa. We have a quorum present.
All right. Citizen comment. The council will hear citizen comments at work sessions, workshops, and regular meetings. There is a sign up process. You may speak once during citizen comment time period, may not yield time to others. You have three minutes to speak. You'll see the timer. When you see only yellow, you'll have less than 20 seconds left. And when the timer's red, your time to speak is up and a bell will ring. We have one person who has signed up. Ms. Barlison, if you would approach podium and see if it's on. It may or may not be.
I think so.
Okay. You have your three minutes.
My name is Michelle Barlison. I'm here today representing the Calaboose African American History Museum. As we all know, there's an item on the agenda. We are more than excited about the conveyance of this property. This is something that is near and dear to the people that live in the Dunbar neighborhood. This building was an original part of the Dunbar School. My mom's 91 now, and she graduated from their valedictorian of her class in 1953. It was the auditorium. So by being able to restore the building, bring it back to the community as an extension of the Calaboose as a museum, because we're just out of room at the Calaboose. And the Calaboose should actually be a museum within its own right, because that was actually the black jail at the time where they held, where they housed the African American inmates. So that's already a museum within itself. This just furthers a, it makes it easier to create a museum district for that area, that you could start at the courthouse, LBJ, and come on down into the Dunbar neighborhood, where we are just so blessed to have so many buildings left that we can create this museum district and have saved the history for the neighborhood. So I'm just really appreciative for the effort that the city's making in helping us to be able to save all these buildings and do the right thing. And hopefully, we can also have this added to some type of a historical designation in relation to Dunbar, which it should be. So we just want to be here today and say thank you, and we look forward to rolling up our sleeves, restoring the building, and making San Marcos proud. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Vina, I only had one person on the list. Okay, then we can move on to item two. I'm sorry, item one.
Receive a staff presentation on the proposed disposition of this Mitchell Center to a nonprofit entity and provide direction to the city manager.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Today's first item is a presentation regarding the Mitchell Center and an opportunity to celebrate the rich and vibrant cultural heritage of the Dunbar neighborhood and the community at large. We will be presenting on the city's process to partner with a nonprofit organization to restore and reactivate the Mitchell Center and to provide the community with additional opportunities to celebrate Black history and culture. I'd like to thank staff from Public Works and Purchasing, as well as the selection panel for their work on this effort. Without further ado, I will turn it over to Assistant Director Pete Binion to provide the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council. Pete Binion, Assistant Director of Public Works. The purpose of our presentation this evening is to provide the selection panel's recommendation and receive direction on city-owned property at 715 Valley Street, also known as the Mitchell Center. The agenda today is to provide you a background, discuss the Mitchell Center proposal selection, receive your direction, and provide a next step. Background. The Mitchell Center was part of what was historically named the San Marcos Colored School until San Marcos School desegregation on September 5th, 1955. Following a fire in the mid-80s that destroyed most of the school, the Mitchell Center was moved to city property. In 1994, the building was moved a second time to the property at 715 Valley Street and completely renovated. And then that same year, the city leased the Mitchell Center for $1 annually to a nonprofit for a 30-year term. In August of 2022, the city had the Mitchell Center inspected and found it to be in disrepair with an estimated $400,000 to rehab that building. In April of 2023, staff presented to council the conditions of the Mitchell Center and other city-owned buildings leased to nonprofits. In February of 2024, staff met with community stakeholders with an interest in the future of the Mitchell Center. And then due to the impending end of the 30-year lease in August of 2024, staff prepared options for council to consider for the future of the Mitchell Center. On March 19th, 2024, council received an executive session presentation to discuss the Mitchell Center and property. And then in, on July 16th, the disposition of the Mitchell Center property, RFP, was posted, and proposals were due September 5th of this year. Six proposals were received. On September 17th, 2024, council again had a second executive session presentation to discuss the Mitchell Center and provide a direction to staff on the selection criteria of the RFP. The RFP selection panel met with the purchasing manager on September 24th to receive instructions, and then the selection panel met again on September 30th to score and select the nonprofit. Proposals were submitted by the Calaboose African American History Museum, the New Zion Baptist Church, the Dunbar Heritage Association, the Sal Powell Foundation, the Pet Preventer Litter Pals of Central Texas, and the Juneteenth Foundation Incorporated. The RFP criteria for the selection panel included a description of the public purpose, which had governance, history, mission statement, and current community programs, a description of the public purpose, which was the proposed Mitchell Center programming, programming schedule, and intent, how the programming celebrates the cultural heritage of the Dunbar neighborhood, and also the audience of the program and the intended outcomes. The third criteria was a description of the nonprofit's financial commitment to repairing the Mitchell Center, and finally, a description of the nonprofit's proposed timeline or repair, plan to repair the Mitchell Center, and begin programming. So here are some of the comments from the selection panel. These are justification comments for why we selected the nonprofit that we did. One, the proposal provided clear commitment to the cultural heritage of the Dunbar neighborhood. Two, this is an established organization with operations in San Marcos. The proposal showed strong community support through recommendation letters. In all, there were 39 recommendation letters received. Many of those came from the residents of the Dunbar neighborhood, but they also included two U.S. House of Representatives, three Hays County Commissioners, the Dun, or the Heritage Association of San Marcos, and a couple other organizations in the community. The proposal provided insight on financial commitment for repairs and maintenance, and it also provided a description of wide-scale use for the property with hours of operation and schedule. And so with that, the selection panel's recommending the Calaboose African American History Museum, who is the highest-ranked respondent. And so with that, what we are seeking in council direction is, does council agree with the staff process for selection of the nonprofit entity with which to begin negotiations for disposition of the Mitchell Center property? And pending that council direction, this item would then be brought to council on November 6th to authorize staff to complete that disposition. And mayor, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, council. Any questions, concerns, thoughts before we ask the question? And I would like to thank the board of the Calaboose Museum for being here. Appreciate that. Any questions?
I love what I'm hearing.
Oh, I do, too. I don't have any questions. I'm just excited that something wonderful is going to happen with this building. I saw it through the last transformation and all the work that was done, and it was turned into a great place then, and it needs a little love and repair. And I'm so happy somebody's willing to step up and do that in order to preserve that building, because this is an important part of our heritage. It's in a beautiful, beautiful sight. So I think it's great. Mr. Scott.
Yeah, I just love the idea of the extension going out and adding more to it for the historical. I think that's pretty cool.
Yep, yep. Getting a, extending the museum district, as it were.
I'd like to thank the Calaboose Board, too, and for stepping up to this. This is going to take some work, and I know it's going to be additional work for all of you and some challenges, but I know you're going to do a great job at it. You're looking forward to the opportunities it's creating, so I'm looking forward for you guys. I'm going to be in full support of this.
Okay. So are, did you have anything?
My mic. I'm also going to be in support of this. I think this is great for the city of San Marcos, especially that part of town, and thank you for all the hard work you all have done.
Okay, the question is, do we agree with the staff process for the selection of the nonprofit entity with which to begin negotiations? So I think the process was great. What you specified, you had the full inspection reports, everybody knows what they're getting into, and so I thought it was perfectly fine. I, good job. Anybody else? Okay. Okay, so what else do you need from us?
That's it, mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, then I think we're ready to go on to item two.
Receive a staff presentation regarding utility billing penalties, penalties, reconnect fees, and utility assistance, including recommended criteria for the utility assistance program request for proposal and provide direction to the city manager.
Our second presentation, mayor and council, is a follow-up to the discussion we had regarding utility billing and assistance provided to utility customers. We'll begin by providing information that was requested at the September 3rd council meeting. We will then go over the criteria we suggest, including the request for proposals for additional partner agencies to provide utility assistance. We are only suggesting the criteria. Council can absolutely add or change any of it. We just want to bring it before you so that it's something that before we go out, that we have all the feedback that we need to make sure that we have a solid proposal going forward. We have a lot of information to go over, so I will turn it over to Finance Director John Locke to provide the presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Locke.
Thank you, mayor and city council. As Ms. Reyes just pointed out, the purpose is to provide some follow-up from the September 3rd city council meeting, specifically on utility billing penalties, reconnections, and disconnections. I did want to point out on the disconnections, we were hoping to bring today a copy of a map by neighborhood showing the disconnections, and we got it really close, and it's just not ready, it's not final yet, so we will follow up with that shortly. And then we will also provide the, some recommendations for the request for a proposal on how to use the city-funded utility assistance. The first couple of slides are just going to hit on some different topics of some questions that were raised. First is regarding the electric lifeline rate and that the, why isn't there a electric lifeline rate? And looking into it, the reason there isn't is, at the time that the electric rates were established, there was already in place the Comprehensive Electric Assistance Program, and that program helps residents who are having difficulties paying their bills. So that was the reason that there wasn't a lifeline rate, as there is with the water, wastewater services today. The next question was regarding access that Spanish-language customers have to utility billing services. And provided here are just some different bullets. There are five bilingual staff within utility billing that can assist customers who wish to speak in Spanish, whether that be if they come to utility billing or by phone or email. There is the, connection and disconnection forms are also available in Spanish. The terms template, and what the terms template is, is it explains everything to a customer when they're opening up a new account. So it includes things, it explains the new account fee, it explains when the bill cycle date will be, the due date, when the disconnect date would be if the customer does not make a payment, as well as all the payment options that the customer has. That is also available in Spanish. And the Customer Connect is not currently available in Spanish. This is the online portal that customers can use. We are working with the software provider to be able to provide Customer Connect in Spanish as well. The next slide covers the fee structure. This was another question that council had from the meeting. The penalty fee is 10% of the overall dollar amount of the bill, and there's a slide coming up that shows what the total amount of penalties paid over the past few fiscal years have been. There's, the reconnect fee is $40 during business hours and $170 if it's after business hours. And that is more expensive because we are, we are having to pay staff overtime to be able to provide that service. Then there's a new service connection fee. It's $40 during business hours and $100 if after hours.
Well, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
How do you calculate that $170?
Right now, that is just where the fee was set at. So there hasn't been a cost analysis performed, you know, for that $170. It's been set at that rate for a while. We do have a bullet here that the other water, wastewater, and electric fees are the fees that will be reviewed during this current fiscal year, and with those fees included. So we'll be doing a cost recovery to estimate the cost that it actually is costing the city to provide those after-hours reconnect and disconnects.
Okay, I just asked that you guys, like, figure out where that fee came from, because I think to understand how we get to where we're at, we always have to look in the past. So I'm very curious as to what was the rhyme and reason for the $170. Whenever you present that, that would be helpful.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
I've got a question here.
With Mr. Gonzalez? Okay, yeah, I had one on this. Do you have one on something different?
No, it's on this.
Okay, go ahead.
On the reconnection fee, does a person actually have to be out there to disconnect it, or is it in someplace else?
There are some accounts that staff is able to reconnect from, from the office, because we have the technology to be able to do that. Not all accounts have that ability. Some, we have to go out to the, to the actual address of the home and do it.
And that's the same price for either done in the office and being out there in person?
Yes, sir. Currently, it's the same price.
Yeah. That doesn't make sense to me, but thank you.
I got something there when you're done.
Is it on this fee?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. Do you have a group that's set up every week or whatever to be responsible for doing, going out and disconnecting fees or reconnecting them, like they're on call?
Yeah, but there, we do have a group of employees that are responsible for this. Yes, sir. They, for the, for the disconnects, whenever there are disconnects, the same group of employees go out to perform the disconnects. And for reconnects, when it goes into after-hours, there are employees that are on-call to be able to perform that service.
So, yeah, we have, we have staff that regularly does the meter reading, and then, yes, after-hours, whenever somebody is disconnected or something like that, after-hours, or that they're wishing to get reconnected, then they have to call somebody that's on-call to do that. And I do think that the $170, because we haven't reviewed that fee in a long time, I think that that was set prior to us having the automated meter reading. And so it'd be interesting for us to look at it now to see, okay, now that we have the technology, is there a differential fee? Because we do have to pay somebody, you know, time and a half in order to do that, and then if there's associated costs that go with overtime, such as any kind of workers' comp or any of that kind of stuff that we have to pay for, so that's how that gets set. But that, and that's going to be the same whether they're behind a machine doing it or whether they're out in the field. What's going to be different is probably the length of time that it takes them to do it. And so that's what we need to be able to understand to better, see what that fee looks like from a cost recovery.
The people that go, and the people that go out into the field are the same people?
Yes. From my understanding, yes.
And what's like the title of that person, like?
They're meter readers.
They're meter readers.
Oh, okay. That's their specific function.
Is there a minimum, when you call somebody out to do something over the weekend, minimum time?
So we have a on-call pay that is, I believe it's $15 a day, and so every time that someone is on-call, they have that automatic, and that's if they don't get called at all. And then if they do get called, then it's time and a half on top of that. There's not a minimum, other than I believe it's 15 minutes, I think is the minimum in which we compensate. I would need to make sure, I don't want to make, I don't want to tell you the wrong thing.
People I've known that do this, like, there's a two-hour minimum?
I don't, I don't believe that we have a two-hour minimum.
Because they're already getting paid to be, I'm going to say, on alert.
Right. I don't want to tell you all the wrong thing on that, because I don't, I don't know the specifics of the minimum part of it.
I think that would be helpful for us to know how that works.
Sure. Yes. And we can definitely look at, you know, how it was calculated before, but just giving, because I do agree with you, council member guys, I think that when it was set, when you look at the history of how we got here, I think it really is because it was all manual, and it all had to be done through a manual process. Now that we do have some automation, we can look and see if that nuances it, and if it does, then what does that look like? The other thing I think, you know, that we want to just make sure that we understand is how we budget for that, for that fee as well.
And there is a slide coming up for that.
I'm sorry, mayor. Wait until you're done.
Go ahead. I'm, I now have two questions.
Okay. What you're saying earlier, that the same person that can do this is the same person that goes out there and disconnects the power. Okay.
Actually, we're talking about reconnects on the weekends and stuff, after-hours.
But disconnects happen with the same people as well.
But disconnects happen during work hours.
It takes that, it takes that person a couple of minutes to open up his laptop and get inside the system and just do what is magic. Okay.
During, during, during the day, when it's a, when it's a regular one, but then, of course, after-hours, it depends on if it's an automated reader, meter.
Right.
Capable reader, or if it's a manual.
And what does that person get per hour or overtime if, if it's taking just 10 minutes? Because I remember where I used to work at, we can get in the computer and change temperatures and everything else inside our facility, and it just took, you know, five or 10 minutes. What does he get paid, a two-hour minimum for?
That's what the mayor just asked, so we're going to, we're going to put that on the list.
She said she's going to check into it.
Yeah, we're going to check on that question, just to make sure that we know. I know they get the $15, $15 on-call pay for being on-call. The city pays people for being on-call just because it's an inconvenience. You can't go out of town.
You can't go out of town.
You can't drink, you can't, you know, there's other things.
I know how that works.
So it's that, you know, there's things and sacrifices, so they pay you $15 a day just to be on-call. But then, and that's if you don't get any calls. Now, if you get a call, then it's time and a half, and it's from, usually from doorstep to doorstep, is the way that they usually calculate the amount of time that they, that they would put on there. But then you also not only have that, but sometimes you have the call taker. So you have a call taker who is taking that, oh, my, my stuff is out of, it needs to be reconnected or whatever. So sometimes it's not always the same person. Sometimes it could be two different people. One, that's the call taker that's taking the, but they can't actually do the meter reconnect, and so then they have to call a meter reader to go and actually do that. So it just depends on who's on-call and how that, how that works. So there's some nuances there that we just need to make sure that we're looking into that and getting y'all, you know, as thorough answer as possible.
Mayor, I have a question, too.
Go ahead. Thank you for asking.
What percentage of all of our accounts are smart readers?
That's going to be my question.
That's my second.
I don't know.
And followed by, and where are they?
Yeah, and, and, and that's exactly right, and where are they?
But also, like, why don't y'all already have this information? I feel like, I thought this is what we were going to get today.
Well, we were asking the question, we're waiting on the answer, and I still got a question that I've been waiting, because y'all keep jumping in.
That's life.
Yeah. The answer to that question is, do we know?
To what? The percentage of how many are?
Are all the smart readers?
No. Now, so the other, let's be, and I don't see Mr. Yorth here, and I don't, and Mr. Pentayan had to rush home, so that, the functions of the meter readers and the questions that you're asking are not under John Locke. Those are under Tyler Yorth. So I just need to make sure that we get those answers from, from Mr. Yorth, and I don't see him online, or I don't see him here.
We just get them on the list, get back to us.
So we'll get them, we'll get them on the list, but I'm just letting y'all know, that's what, we, we ourselves can't answer, but we do need Tyler to help answer those questions, and we will do that. I'm, I'm sorry, he's not here.
No, and I knew there was probably going to be some nuances with this, that we weren't going to, you know, we're just digging into this, right? And so some of the stuff I had looked at, I hadn't quite thought about until I, I didn't know where this discussion was going to go today, but I think that might play a real role in, in having the map, too, right? Just kind of to see where the, because I can clearly look from the statistics, or it looks like it's kind of the same accounts. The numbers are almost overlapping year after year, but to just see the spatial part of it.
And let me, let me tell you why we don't have the map, because we've been looking at, if we just say, how many people have been disconnected throughout the city, even if it's one time, just because they forget, it's not people that are habitual. And we want to make sure that we're looking, that we're giving y'all an accurate picture. So we can give you something that shows, like, every single account that's ever been disconnected. That's not going to paint an accurate picture of what y'all are really looking for, what you're really wanting to see. Who are those people who constantly struggle and want to make sure that we understand what that looks like? So that's what we're refining right now, is trying to make sure that that's what we're getting, is the information of people who have multiple accounts, or multiple times that they have been disconnected throughout the year. We're also discounting FY '20 and '21, because of those were COVID years, and there were other measures that were put in place. So we're looking at '23, '24 data to try to give us a more accurate representation. So that's the reason why we don't have that map to show you today. We endeavored to do it. With us having a couple days short, we just weren't able to get it, get it done today.
I had one other thing, too. The person on-call, do they have to reside in the city? So that was another part of, I figured it probably wasn't required, and so that if somebody's driving in, you're.
But how close do they have to be? I mean, I get linekill road to be okay.
So there's a, there's a, again, a call-out provision. Is NDA, NDA specific available, maybe, to just join us for Zoom? But, because some of them are personnel questions. There is a minimum, or there's a maximum amount of, it's a, it's a call-out time in which they have to respond. There's a minimum response time, let me say that.
10:15.
So I want it, no, I want to say it's like an hour. And so because I know for SMU, it had gotten to a point where they were not getting, like, for the linemen and stuff like that, they weren't getting as many applicants from, if you only had like a 15 or 30-minute response time. So they had to go out further in order to get people and recruit people from other, other communities to try to come in, and so that's why it's gone to like an hour. So again, if it's from front door to front door, that's where some of those, those overtime numbers come from.
Well, and that's where I was kind of getting at with this, is we were kind of getting into the account portion of it. What I was trying to get, wrap my head around is the person responding to that. Were they driving an hour in each way? And that's going to vary from call to call, week to week.
Correct.
It's going to be hard to kind of pin that down.
Depending on who's on-call.
That cost is.
Right, because they go on a rotation, and so it depends on who is on-call and where that person resides. So, yeah, so there's, there's a lot of different factors that go into it, and so I apologize, we don't have all the information. We, I myself took copious notes the last time to make sure, and so I sent these over, and I'm like, let's not forget anything that they asked for. So I appreciate the team for getting all the things here, but yes, there's going to be nuances that come together from y'all, our discussion, and we're open, obviously, to getting y'all any information that y'all are requesting.
Gosh, I thought we were ready to move.
Okay, so that's how we're paying people, but there's not a difference to the person who's been disconnected. This is the fee, correct? Okay, so we're just figuring out what, what that takes, but if we're paying somebody to come in an hour and an hour back, that's costing us a whole lot more money than somebody who lives closer in. Okay. So I am interested in where the auto meters are. I'm hoping those are in the newer areas that, I know that y'all have noticed, that our city is getting really big. When you put it on a map, everything's getting a whole lot smaller, because you go from La Sima to Trace, that's kind of a long, long way out there. So, yes, that would be good to know. I'm kind of assuming the auto are probably in the new, new areas, but I don't know.
I don't.
And do we have a plan for them all to be changed out at some point? Are these, do all of our meters send a signal in so we don't have to go read them?
No.
Are they all AMI?
No, no, ma'am.
We're not there yet?
No.
Are we planning to get there?
Yes, I know that, that we do have a plan, and we are planning to get there. That information, we'll need to follow up with, too, as part of just, you know, what the total accounts that we have that are capable or up to.
or of doing that, and, you know, what the plan is to, to get all of the accounts.
And some of them, customers can opt out, so that's the other aspect.
Yeah, some people don't want that.
Some people don't want them, and they have their, their, you know, their, their preferences for those things, and so it may not even be that we don't have the capability um, or that we haven't gone that far, but it, it could be that someone has opted out of doing an automated meter.
So, is, is the, the AMI meter, is that a, uh, if it's one, they can send the signal back? Is that one that we can unlock or reconnect online?
Usually, yes.
Okay, so here's my question, why is it a hundred and seventy to reconnect, but a hundred to do a new connect? What's, why, why the big difference in those two numbers? If somebody's gotta go out and do something, uh.
Well, I, I, I think that, um, not knowing the original reason that, that, you know, these numbers were set at the amounts that they were, I would think that it's because on the reconnect fee, that is, it's more of a consequence of someone not paying their bill um, on time, and so that's why it's set at a higher amount, because somebody didn't pay their bill. And, you know, the, and the new connect fee is just, you know, somebody who come in and they need their account set up. Um, and it, um, and it's not, it's not, ha, doesn't have anything to do with, um, making payment on their account or something like that.
So it's like punitive, it's like a punishment, you're punishing people for not paying their bill. Is that, that's my understanding, is that?
That, that could be the philosophy.
Instead of consequence, that's wild.
Yes, I mean, that's, that's the intent of a, a late fee is to entice people to pay their bill on time.
Which is fundamentally rooted in like delusion, and just a way for big corporations to make money. I just want people to understand that.
Yeah, if you, if you can't pay the bill, it's gonna be really hard to pay the.
Good question, Mayor.
All along the other stuff, hold on. So, um.
Yeah, I think, I think it was meant to be a deterrent, but of course, that doesn't mean that that has to be the philosophy now. I think we can look at the costs, you know, recovery, and look and see where, where we want to go moving forward.
With the cost recovery, you're gonna be looking at just averaging out what it costs and the average number per year, and just divide that up, so it's basically a cost recovery?
It ends up being a cost recovery, however we can, yes, and so whatever methodology that we come up with to try to make sure that we look at how that goes, and then, and we can bring that back. And the other thing, just so y'all know that we were balancing, is that y'all said bring back some of this, this conversation whenever we brought back the RFP, and we're trying to get the RFP out as early as we can. And so that's the other reason for us trying to hurry up and bring some of this back, and we've only been able to scratch some of the surface. So I apologize if it's causing you more frustration, but it's really trying to get us.
This doesn't affect getting the RFP out.
So we're trying to get the RFP out, we can still have more conversation. This isn't like a one-and-done about the disconnects and reconnect fees, we can still talk about that. Um, but that was the whole thing, was us trying to get y'all that as soon as possible, and y'all said bring this stuff back, and we weren't wanting to prolong the RFP process.
So, and we're gonna get to the RFP stuff, is there anything else on this slide?
I just want to clarify, my frustration, I know it's like very physical, it's not like individually towards you. Like I know that you, John Locke, didn't pen, I think we should punish people and charge them a hundred and seventy dollars. It's like towards the system, so I just wanna name that, like it's not, I understand that y'all care about our neighbors. And any feedback I've ever given on utility stuff, Stephanie's been quick to fix it, um, so I just want to name that so people can get.
Well, we're, I mean, and where you have us who want to do the right thing, and want to do what the philosophy of this council is and what y'all want to, to do going forward, so we will get whatever information that you need to be able to make informed decisions about where you want to go going forward. Um, so that's, that's a, that's a guarantee that, that I know we all stand behind, trying to do that.
Well, and the one thing I want to point out too is, um, if it does cost us two hundred and fifty dollars to go hook one up, because a guy's gotta drive in an hour each way, and then have some issues, um, if it's only, if, if, if the cost is going over that, we're having to charge the other rate payers, so it's a penalty to them for someone else not paying, it's not necessarily. So, you know, it is an encouragement to get somebody to pay, and hopefully it's a reminder of, not only if I don't get my bill paid, that I'm gonna have another two-hundred-dollar charge, it says, you know, we don't want to raise everybody's rates, and if we've got this kind of overage on a regular basis, um, these numbers are higher than I thought they were gonna be. I mean, they're, these are significant numbers that.
You mean the number of?
The one, the one seventy.
Right, yeah, and, and if we're not recovering that, we're having to charge the other rate payers, so I'm, I'm sympathetic to all of it, but we just need to keep in mind that either A, the people that are, these accounts are gonna pay that, or B, the people who have paid their bill on time are having to get charged extra to make up for this.
And, um, and Rodney's let me know that Ms. Spasic is online, if y'all do want to know about the two-hour minimum and, uh, any other like personnel-related stuff as far as the response time. So do y'all want to get those questions answered, or do y'all want us to bring those back whenever we bring back other?
Bring it back.
Yeah, I have something on that.
For me personally, I would prefer like all this stuff to just be like written down like memo style, so I could easily reference it and not have to like dig through the PDF, like that, that's just like, I don't know if anybody else feels that, but that's, that would be helpful to me.
I'd like to see the fee, I'd like to see actually, uh, individual house, basically what, you know, they had to pay. For one guy, what did we pay him? His pay plus hour and a half, and how much that actually is. I really want to see that layout.
So just basically like show a, show what it would be like for just a X Y Z employee.
What do he get paid normally per hour, then on top of that, you know, and then how long he, he normally gets that?
We can, we can give a hypothetical kind of a, of a situation, just to kind of show that. Uh, obviously, we'll do more digging when it comes to look, us doing the cost recovery study, but we can give y'all something, just kind of to give you an idea as we go through further conversations in the future.
GIS should be able to put on, put on paper where the, all of our people on-call live and do an average time to the average neighborhoods that we're seeing the most of these, right? Like, that shouldn't be that hard to calculate, that'd be a great one for GIS to work on.
Don't call the guy an hour away.
The twenty twenty-four, if that's the person who's on-call though, we, we can't control that, cause you can't. I mean, like literally, there, it's a designated person who's on-call, and it could be the person that's in, that lives an hour away, and so that's the person that gets called, cause you're not gonna call other people who are not on-call that disrupt their weekend to come in to do that.
I understand that, but you might want to have to rearrange it. It used to be you had to live in town, all the heads had to live in town, and then we slowly got away from that. So I think that we need to really focus on, what is it costing us to have people be out of town and coming in? Cause that, I want to see those numbers as well.
That's a, that's a big, I, I, I think that'll be a big recruitment thing, like I said, just from some of the folks, because we had it at a, at a thirty-minute minimum. So if someone could live in New Braunfels or something like that, new, maybe Seguin. Um, but then I know for some of the line workers, that's where they started to say, okay, we're not getting qualified applicants um, to be able to apply for our jobs, and that's why I ended up going to an hour.
Here's, here's a thought, how many, how many folks do we have in this category? Three, twelve?
Oh, meter readers? I don't know how many meter readers we have.
Okay.
At least, I'm thinking at least ten.
But are they all, go cycle through this being on-call on the weekend? Is that something everybody has to do, or is it a choice?
Every, no, everybody goes through it.
And what, what if we just had the ones that live close in be on-call?
They might have a problem with it, because then they're the ones that constantly get called. Some of them, some of them will trade, cause there's that option where they can say, hey, I want to earn the extra money.
Right.
And they'll do it, and they'll, they'll trade, so that's always an option, but some of the other ones don't want to. They don't, they don't even want to be on-call when they're on-call, because it's disruptive.
Right.
I live with somebody that goes on-call, and I know it's not, it's not an easy, it's not an easy thing.
It's tough, cause I mean, it's very expensive to live in San Marcos, so there's people whose whole heart is in San Marcos and were priced out. And they do good work, I mean, they showed up and showed out during our winter storm, during ta-ta-ta-ta-ta, so it's, yeah, that's tough to balance.
And especially like, so when, when things happen during storms, to your point, um, Councilmember Gavasa, is that, so when things happen, um, like transportation folks and things like that, they will say, hey, we know there's a big thing coming up. They'll require them to stay in town, and so then we'll have to put them, them up, you know, to stay in town somewhere. Uh, they'll contact the fire department, hey, do you have some extra beds or something? Now we have PSC that has some more room for them, but they will make them stay in town, even if they live in Austin or whatever, and be away from their homes in order to be able to serve the community. So that's, that's something that again, operationally, that we work through and have, as, as these different things come up that we can anticipate.
Right, I appreciate you bringing their perspective, cause during snowmageddon, I know a lot of folks just said via Comdeosan didn't show up to work in other cities, and I feel like for us, we had, I mean, that was my perception, that we had them. Um, yeah, show up, so that's important to consider, thank you.
Mayor, Mayor, just a second, good question.
Okay.
Uh, a meter reader and the person that disconnects the power, is that the same, are they qualified to do that?
A meter reader and somebody who disconnects or reconnects the power, that, that's their job.
Okay, i- it's the same person?
It's the same person. So that's, that is their primary duty, is to read all the meters that they have to do manual reads for.
Right.
And then they do the disconnects and the reconnects, um, when stuff like that happens, yes.
Okay, there's such a different classic, classification.
It's, it's not usually too different, because, uh, the, the line folks are gonna be the ones that are actually working on the lines, right? So if there's an actual failure somewhere, that's not on the, the, the actual box, you know, but it's more on the lines, then that's where you're gonna have your, your line crew, that's gonna be responsible for that part of the operation. So they're handling the live wires and all that kind of stuff, so, and so you'll have a helper, usually an apprentice and a line person, and they're out working, working that operation, and a crew leader.
Okay.
Yeah, so they're, they'll be called out if there's like a power outage or something like that, then that will be what, what their, what their role is. But a meter re- reader is usually getting the call if there's somebody that needs something after hours, and then they're having to go and actually reconnect, disconnect, that kind of thing. Or there's sometimes the call takers, cause they have the rotation to make it be less often that they have to go. They have the call takers who don't actually go out in the field, they'll get the call, and then they'll dispatch a, a reader.
Have, have, have we ever discussed, um, an economic incentive for these type of people that are on-call to live in the city? Cause I could see cost savings here pretty significantly, in the, in the terms of if there was an additional incentive for the employee to reside in the community. Um, in the long run, there's probably some savings to be had there. And I, I mean, it's ju, it's just a way to maybe get somebody in town, you know, to, whether that's an extra couple thousand dollars a year to their pay.
The, the home buyers incentive is the one thing that we just, you know, that we just did.
But even with the renters, I mean, just something of, of people who are on-call and required, that are not required to live here, but may need to be on-call, we have a distance, but I think throwing out some sort of an economic incentive for them to be here, um, would be a positive.
But then we've got to pay that.
Yeah, but if you only pay them a couple thousand dollars, you start to look at these disconnects, how many they're doing a month.
It's, I don't think it's going, it, it wouldn't be a couple thousand dollars, when you think about what the price of homes are here, than they are to others.
Two hundred dollars a month would really change my mind on whether I get an apartment in South Austin or San Marcos.
Or San Marcos.
Or in the country, right, and so we're not talking a ton here, that, um, and, and then also you have somebody who might be more willing to be on-call because they're here too.
Cause they're here too.
So, is that something y'all can look at and bring back?
We could, we can look and see, I mean, that would be something that we'd want to do, obviously during budget time, but it's something that, that we can definitely look at and see if there's an incentive.
And I'm talking about all departments here, like anybody that's required to be on-call besides like the fire department, uh, or some of these other ones. You know, um, that, that there's, there's real impacts and fees involved with commutes, drives, and it's only gonna get worse with traffic, so over time. And then, and then you're incentivizing someone to actually move to the community, so.
And, and I'm all for that.
Yeah, I know, and I'm throwing more budgetary stuff at you, but.
Okay, so you're working on your list, and at the end of to, this presentation, you're gonna come back and you're going to give us your list.
I'm gonna give you the list that I have, and y'all can tell me if I've missed anything. Also, um, Linda did, did clarify, we don't have the two-hour minimum, I'm still gonna put this in one thing, but we don't have a two-hour minimum. That changed when we added, um, the available call-out pay in twenty seventeen, that's that fifteen-dollar, um, minimum. So now it's actual time work, um, and then, we have a residency, they have to live within a specific response time, which is different for a different employee. So that, that, that's the, the one hour that I was telling you, and that, that's gonna be different for different, um, work groups. So public works could have a thirty-minute response time, electric could have a one-hour response time, so, but it, it just depends on what the work group does.
And all this stuff you're telling us is gonna be written up, so that we will have it, so I don't have to keep all these notes.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Prather. Who has politely used to raise hand figure instead of just blurting out his question, so thank you, Mr. Prather.
Just a direction, um, you know, I want to make sure that we always have the greatest amount of grace and compassion when we deal with our folks, especially with utility assistant programs and helping people keep the lights on. There's a lot of people that struggle in our community, and I think we just should have the greatest amount of, um, understanding when we deal with that. And then also, you know, I, I, I feel like I'm bringing this every time, we talk about utilities, smart meters, everything else. Um, and I know we have some of these capabilities, and I really want to enhance them, but help empower people with their own data for their electrical and water usage. I know you get alerts if there's like, you know, increased water usage, but I want it in more real-time, so when you have a leak in real-time, or if you wanna, like, for example, my home, I have a smart thermostat where I can turn it up, turn it down, and it kind of gamifies, you know, like how much electric usage have I used today versus yesterday, and what can I do to kind of be more efficient?
I think we do have that as part of our current system.
We do, but it shows, it always shows the previous day, and then water, it's usually the previous two days. And then you do get some text alerts if there's some massive water spikes, and I said, uh, there's some of those capabilities, but really want to enhance and bring it into more real-time, uh, cause I think it can help people save on their bills.
And you brought this up before.
Yeah, I, I, I brought, for nine years, every time I'm like, smart meters, you know, empowering technology.
Yes.
Um, but, uh, it's, you know, that's where the future's heading, and any way we can help, um, facilitate that, I think it really will help our, our citizens.
Are we ready to go to the next slide? Yes, Mr. Gonzalez, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we didn't talk about water and wastewater on this, did we?
I was assuming that when we're talking about a reconnect, it's for, cause if, your utility bill is all together.
Right.
So if it's disconnected, it would be, well, you can't disconnect wastewater, but water and electric.
Okay, uh, I would like to know, how is wastewater, uh, disconnected?
I don't think you can. You really wouldn't want to, cause there's no meter on there.
Right, now, the water part, you had, physically have to go up there, there's no computer system that can actually.
That's what I was asking, when I was talking about AMI, I was talking about water too, not just electric. How does that work electronically to cut one back on?
I, I, um, to my understanding, that, they, that only works on the electric side. I'd have to confirm that, uh, with, with utilities, Mr. Yorth, and, and include that in a follow-up, but I'm not sure that we can cut water off remotely.
That would be super helpful to know, because that's what I was told when I was like, wait, you want me to give up my firstborn child to pay for this? Um, they were like, yeah, like, it's not like, we can't go like that, if it's water, we have to go out.
And that's what I understand.
But I don't know.
I think it, I think it is, the electric is only for the automated meters, I think the water does have to be manually done. And so like, you also have your ordinance that says, okay, we're not gonna disconnect electricity if you're over a hundred degrees, and you're not gonna, uh, disconnect if you're under thirty, uh, freezing or whatever. So I know there's that, but that's not for water wastewater, so we still can cut off water wastewater during those particular types of things, and so, and we do.
And we're not cutting off on Fridays anymore, right?
That's correct, Fridays or, um, like right before a holiday.
Day before a holiday.
Correct.
Okay.
No.
That's good, and, um, I'm, I'm with you on the notification, cause that really saved me one time when I got a phone call because the water faucet had just popped off, and it was going full force, and it was at the other end of the property. So I would not have known if I didn't get the call, the call was after three days.
And it would, I mean, and, and for those types of situations, and again, an alert is better, because it can be more proactive, but when things like that do happen, we do work with our customers to find out, okay, if you can say that it was a leak, and you can show proof that it was a leak, then we will forgive, you know, that portion of, of, we'll do an average bill over your last several billing cycles. And so then that's how they calculate your new bill, uh, versus the elevated bill.
Faucet had just popped off and it was full force, wow, for three days.
I'm always in.
Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Scott has asked for permission.
I wasn't done on my question.
Okay, we'll come back.
Oh, okay, so as Mr. Gonzalez pointed out, what triggers that for me is how much are where do you get the logic of wastewater billing? Where do you get that, cause wastewater's sometimes close to almost the same thing, if not over, you know, and that's ridiculous.
Based on your water usage and winter months, is that correct?
Right, but the point of that is I'd like to see how that's calculated, I'd like to see, um, just kind of where that came from, because.
People always seem to have questions about that, like even online, like what is this?
Okay, then that goes on the list, and we will go on, and I will go back to Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, um, when it comes to disconnecting the water, you do that under regular time, not overtime?
Correct, uh, with, with wastewater?
No, water.
Disconnects are done during regular business hours.
Yes, if, if it's for non-payment, they're done during. Yes, if, if it's for non-payment, they're done during business hours. If something happens after hours, then that's a different, like, so if someone wants to reconnect and they didn't get to it during regular business hours, that's where the higher fees will come in.
And that's the same fee as for the electrical, for the water?
That's what I don't know.
Yes.
It is?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Or it's, it's connected together?
It's the same fee to reconnect after hours, whether it be electric or water.
Okay.
And I just wanted to throw something out here to remind everyone, uh, maybe for those watching at home or watching this later. Not everybody in San Marcos has San Marcos Electric Utility.
Right.
And as we annex, there's gonna be more people BEC and more people with blip on it. This only has to do with San Marcos Electric Utility and our water wastewater. So it's entirely possible for them to have our water, somebody else's electric, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And how are you gonna differentiate that in like the maps of it all and all of that, cuz like I fall under that category, I have water with.
You have blip on it?
Yeah, I have blip on it.
On the map, we're gonna show the disconnects, it, it just shows disconnects whether that be electric or water.
But it's only for City of San Marcos Utilities, we, we don't have the others, yeah.
If, if we could on that map, could we have all the CCNs labeled, color shaded, like the PEC, the San Marcos Electric, so that, you know, we can see that, yeah, there's this area's got a bunch of disconnects, but those are just water or it would be nice to be able to have that overlay made as part of the map.
Little color shading.
Yeah.
Okay.
That we know that it's not electric in those areas.
True, yeah.
And I, and I don't think all, all of us can really wrap our head around how the CCNs actually move around, it's pretty crazy.
I have one more comment, ma'am.
And I've got, and I've got one more question too.
Hold on, Mrs. Dorza.
So, okay, I'm sorry to like throw this back, but I think, I just don't want us to like lose this thought. So I think it's an investment in our community to incentivize local workers for a lot of reasons, we don't have to go down that rabbit hole, but I'm interested in exploring Mr. Gleason's suggestion, I understand that it's, it was gonna be expensive and something that needs to be more intentionally contemplated during a budget season. But what di- direction do we have to give and what is the right setting to do that, to like at least get folks like to start assessing that like staff? Does that make sense? Cuz I feel like sometimes you have really good ideas and then we don't do anything with it, like similar to Jude bringing up the smart data, like, how do we make it, like, I don't know if it's just us two that are feeling that, like, is everybody else feeling that?
Kind of things, it's nice to discuss beforehand so that when the budget discussions come up, it has been brought to light a little bit at least. The staff can somewhat look at it, that it's not we're blindsiding them on budget discussions, do these things that, hey, these are things the council may be interested in of whatever these incentives would be, and then staff can go and say, we have fifty employees on call on a weekly basis or whatever, and if we incentivized every one of them, this would be the max cost, I mean, you can, they can put pen to paper and kinda calculate that stuff of what what that kind of a policy change would actually potentially cost.
Kinda stuff that just y'all have in the conversation, I can see that there's widespread interest, it's not one person is just saying.
Ask is, is, do we have at least four of us, I, I'm interested in everything everybody has brought up.
Me too.
So are y'all?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're not one and done, we're, we're all, if the question was asked, we're, we're all interested in the response.
Do you want me to recap what I've heard from y'all so far, just to make sure we don't lose?
And I got one more for you too, before you go, you're done.
Just so we don't, just so we don't lose.
So let's just get the one more.
The other one was that, that Councilmember Scott and I brought up was the ten percent penalty. And I do want that relooked at, look, on those months that you either have somebody staying with you or when it gets to a hundred and ten, I mean, I had a five hundred and fifty dollar utility bill one month, and when you get hit with a penalty on top of having the high utility bill, it's just an, it, it can be significant, you're talking fifty extra dollars, so I would love to see that be a flat rate. You know, well, it's one seventy, that's the reconnect, I'm talking about the penalty.
This penalty's on top of that, but it's of your.
Ten percent penalty fee, you can have the reconnect fee too, so I, I don't, I don't like it when we have either a weather event where it's super cold or super hot, that people are kinda hurting one way or another, and then they have an additional fee on top of that that puts a burden on them that they may end up in disconnect that. I, I think at this point, especially with smart meters and those other things we have going on, that we shouldn't look at a flat rate across the board, that way, when you get a high you bill, you're not getting an additional fifty or sixty dollar fee on top of that.
And that's the other part of this, is that, so to y'all's point, these are utility accounts, right, and so if we are and we run those as, as separate businesses.
Yeah.
So all of those, like money things that we're talking about, those go to those electric utility and water wastewater funds, which then goes into the rate model that determines the fees. So that's, that's the part that we just need to have those conversations and make sure as we're doing the rate model uh, for the upcoming year, that's when we wanna make sure all these things are figured in, if we're gonna offer stuff like this. Um, there may be a part on the general fund side that we're gonna look at if it comes to those things, those operations that are um, out of the general fund parks, um, transportation, you know, if there's anything with police, fire, any of those kinds of things for response times. They typically don't go on call, so it's not necessarily the same as far as with police and fire, obviously I see Chief Stevens is here, if there's if you, if you can correct me if I'm wrong on that, I think it's, unless there's some kind of major thing, they really wouldn't go on call. So we can look at all of that, but just wanna sensitize y'all to the fact that all of this stuff is gonna go into whatever the rate models are and how that goes in, so um, what those fees are and what those recommendations come out as, as part of that.
Well, well, look, I mean, I totally understand all of that when you're dealing with an impossible employee or multiple employees dealing with an interaction with a customer or utility account person, having to travel, go to and from, but we're talking about here is just, when I'm bringing up specifically, it's just a penalty, right? There's no additional time really.
Right, it's on the list.
No, no, my, my comment is about everything, about the incentives, all of it, it's not, it's not just penalties. So, the things that I have so far, and Mr. Locke, I know you've been, you've been kinda keeping stuff too, and, and Griselle and Ismael, so if I miss something, counsel, please. But the things I have so far, um, is how many accounts are automated meter accounts, so we wanna know that. Um, how is cost recovery calculated for connects and reconnects, uh, and disconnects? Um, is there a two hour minimum once dispatched, which we answered, but we'll still put that on here, cost to reconnect for automated meter reading versus manual? Do a hypothetical.
Split that into electric and water, cuz we're thinking water, somebody's still gotta go.
Split into water and electric. And then I did say, do a hypothec- uh, hypothetical employee scenario to show all costs that would be involved, you know, when there, when there's call out. Incentive for employees to live in the city, two hundred dollars a month as an example, uh, to live in the city. Uh, what is the call out response time for our employees, alerts for leaks or weird electric usage in real time? How is water wastewater disconnected manually or can it be automated? How are wastewater fees calculated? Show CCNs when we do the multiple disconnects map, look at the ten percent penalty and look at being a flat fee. Are those all the questions and comments?
Why is one seventy and a hundred different? And, and, and maybe it's always been that way, but I just think, when we start looking at how to calculate this in the future, it may not matter how it was calculated before, we just need to fix it.
He said, um, not current, but estimated times. I'd rather have the real time, um.
My response time for a meter?
Yeah, I like the real time, not like we hypothetically.
Well, that's what we're, we're paying them based on.
But it, but it has to be hypothetical, cuz every single one's gonna take a different amount of time. So that's why I'm just gonna say, like, if, if they think it takes thirty minutes, right, to do it, how, what, what goes into a thirty minute call, right? And so what's the cost involved in that? Um, they, they can talk about what it costs or the time that it takes to actually do a manual disconnect or reconnect versus an automated meter disconnect, that'll be one answer. But then the second thing can be the actual hypothetical scenario, if it's like they have to go out in the field, what does it cost? Versus what is a automated meter reading hypothetical scenario, right, so it'd be two, two separate ones.
It's close.
Is that?
Yeah, it's close.
Okay, counsel, we spent about thirty minutes on this one slide, our discussion has been really, really important. Did you have something else your hands raised?
Oh, no, that was for the, the.
All right, I'll fix that. Well, we've got some other things, so we've got things on the list, we're not gonna solve all of them today, but we've got them on the list, so we're gonna go on to the next slide.
So the, the next slide covers the penalty fees, um, and there's uh, different rows, the, the first section shows the number of accounts that received a fee, and I, it's important more so to focus on twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four. Um, as Ms. Reyes mentioned at the be- at the beginning, the twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one were impacted by COVID and they were handled differently, so for trending, it's important to just like at twenty-two to twenty-four. Um, the next section down is the number of um, accounts that uh, received a, a penalty. And um, so for instance, in twenty twenty-four, there were sixty-seven hundred commercial accounts that received a penalty and um, fifty-three hundred residential accounts, those are just individual penalty counts.
But what you, yeah, but you say we only have nineteen hundred commercial accounts, I don't think that's accounts with a penalty, I think that's penalties total.
Yes, yes, ma'am, yeah, so the, the first section is just.
Multiple per account.
Yes, thank you, and because on average, um, if, if you look at the total penalties for twenty-four, it shows sixty thousand. Of those sixty thousand, there were sixteen thousand looking right above, sixteen thousand individual accounts that incurred those sixty thousand penalties. So we have on average over three penalties per account, so there's a lot of repeat offenders receiving, yes, ma'am.
All right, okay, thank you.
And uh, if you go down to the next section, it has the amount of the penalty. And so looking at from twenty-two through twenty-four, you can see that it was anywhere between a total of one point four million to one point six million dollars be- between those three years.
This is the ten percent.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And uh, while we have a box around at the bottom, because this really, um, it, this is the average and it really um, speaks to what that, when, when we talk about making it be a fixed amount of what, what level would you set that um, late fee penalty at? So when, when you look at the residential customer, uh, from twenty-two to twenty-four, it averaged around fourteen dollars. So the average penalty amount per residential customer was fourteen dollars.
I, 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 there's one thing about this that's gonna vary tremendously. That's a very low number and there's a reason for it, apartments, they don't have all the additional things on here. So when you put the average penalty for a residential customer, the, the residences, homes, and then need to be separated out from the apartments on that. The calculations on those are gonna be completely different. There's no one that owns a home that only has a hundred and forty dollar utility bill, very few. Those are gonna be because of apartments, they don't have the additional fees and they may not be paying the water, they may not be paying the trash.
Yeah.
And then it's gonna impact, so I, I would love to see the average residential that has all three services or at least one or two of them and the apartments separated out from the homeowner on this.
Single family from multi would be helpful.
Yeah, that, that, that's a good point, sir, and, and I don't know where that's accounted for, so um, we'll need to follow up.
When I saw that figure, I said some.
Well, we know the fourteen is not.
Yeah, I knew it wasn't, I knew, and then I instantly thought it's, it's the apartments because they're not paying water or the trash.
I think you're right, so, let's move on.
Wanna make a note of is Mr. Yorth has joined us online, so if there are questions specific to this, then we can, we can, um, I know we've got the list of questions that we can talk about, but as we start going through the rest of the presentation, if there are other questions, we might be able to get some answers as well.
Okay.
And the, the only other thing to touch on on this slide is on the commercial side, it, the average is about a hundred during that three year period. The next slide covers the utility reconnect fees. And it has the same time period from FY twenty twenty through fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Again, just focusing on twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-four, you can tell that it's a, it's a similar amount, it's, it's right around a hundred and ninety thousand dollars every year is the total amount of reconnect fees. And when you look at, um, when you back into what the cost is, the, the forty dollars during business hours, a hundred and seventy dollars for after hours, uh, for, um, for residential accounts, it's about uh, forty-one hundred total accounts is on average, um, annually that are being um, reconnected, um, to generate that revenue and about a hundred and sixty commercial accounts. Or, I, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I looked at that uh, incorrect, I, I just gave you the business hours compared to after hours. So for residential accounts, it's about forty-three hundred and commercial, it's thirty-eight, um, on, on average through, through that time period.
This was another number that really jumped out at me, um, when you do the math of twenty-seven eight eighty divided by one seventy, it's only a hundred and sixty-four after hour disconnects.
Yes.
So far this year, and the numbers are pretty similar year after year. I, 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 I'm, I'm surprisingly low but good, right, like that's, that most of these are being handled during business hours, so when we talk about the after hours penalties here, when, when I was looking at the one seventy, you're not really, uh, uh, it's not a huge discrepancy in money there. Most of these are being done during residential hours, when you look at one sixty-two divided by the forty dollars instead of one seventy.
Yes, sir.
So the after hours is not a lot, that's why I really think the fee should be looked at on that, that we're dealing with only a, you know, maybe the average of fifteen a month, ten or twelve a month, whatever.
Yes.
Okay. Next slide.
The, the next slide uh, compares the penalties, the actual penalties come to the budget for a particular year. Um, again, if, if we look at um, more recent years, uh, you can see, begin with the penalties uh, for fiscal year, from fiscal year twenty-two through twenty-four, the actual amount was um, about one point four million dollars. And you see, the budget has been anywhere between nine hundred thousand and one point two million dollars. Yes, sir.
Are you including, actually it boils down to if, um, I'm sorry, I'm losing my thought. That um, we don't need to be making money off the people, okay? And are you budget, actually budgeting these numbers into our budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's, that shouldn't be, cuz you don't know exactly what people are gonna be getting, you don't know if they're gonna get disconnected.
Well, it's the best guess based on prior.
Based on prior, again, but that's, you'd have to do that after the, after the fact, and I don't think that's fair for the people, but anyway, that was my question, thank you.
We haven't been running a deficit.
No, and, and um, if you look on the reconnect side, it's, it's similar. Um, where the actual is about a hundred and ninety thousand and you can see what was budgeted over the past few years. Um, the last two years, a hundred and fifty-five thousand.
Okay.
And that takes us to the utility assistance donations, uh, one of the questions was asked is how much money has been donated? Uh, there's currently approximately forty-three thousand dollars that, that has been donated, we, we received around forty-nine hundred dollars annually on average of donations uh, towards this program. So, you know, highlighted there, there's, um, there, there hasn't been a specific item that this money has been put towards, internally, staff has always operated as if this money is used to go towards the hundred and twenty thousand dollars that we set aside for the city utility assistance, so that's how we've operated. Um, and, but just wanted to be sure that we're clear and addressing there hasn't been something that's um, specifically said, this is what this money should be used for.
Okay, I'm confused, can you explain that again?
Yeah. Um, which part, the?
Like, we have this money and where, like where it's going or what the assumption is or what?
Yeah, so um, the forty-three thousand is the total amount of money that um, residents have donated for, uh, to go towards utility assistance.
Since when?
That has been.
Multi years?
Yes.
Okay, that, that's good now.
Yeah.
So it just like hasn't been touched or?
Well, and it, it, it depends on how you look at it, like internally, the way that staff has always interpreted that, we, we set aside a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year for utility assistance. And the thought is, is we're using these donations to help offset some of the costs of setting aside that one hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Wait, what, so this is not in addition to, this is like, oh, we gave this one twenty thousand and since we gave it, now we're gonna take this?
Yes.
That's messed up, what?
Yeah, well, because it's, it.
Then why say give one twenty, like, this is just bizarre that I'm, like, that I'm hearing this for the first time ever.
So that means there's a guaranteed one twenty.
Yes.
But the donations are used to offset it?
Yes, ma'am.
It's not in, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say it again, it's not in addition to?
Correct.
And do the people, and you know, like, when you sign up to donate stuff, like, do they know that?
I'm, I'm sorry, ma'am.
So like, you know, like when you do a GoFundMe, this is going to my cat whose leg needs to be amputated. Um, like, what is, like, and then you don't, if you don't do that, then GoFundMe can take your money back. Um, but what are, what are they, what are the, what's the line, like, what do they think?
It's gonna be used to um, assist people who are having difficulties paying their bills.
But the way we conceptualize that is, we're gonna take it to offset the money we already encumbered to put towards utility assistance. To offset it, right, like, is it, am I the only one who's tripping about this?
Well, but, but the money is going to help people, but I didn't, I thought it was in addition to.
Right, because it, it's not going to help people, it's. Right, because it, it's not going to help people, it's going to offset the amount of money that we proclaim that we're putting aside to help people. Like, that's, I feel like that's a little, that's a little bit of gymnastics we're doing to justify.
So, we're, so we're saying, and I'm sorry, I didn't understand this either. So, so, the council budget's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars per year that goes to community action for assistance.
Yes.
And so, this, this forty-three thousand that we have from residents paying, I think what, what I'm hearing is that basically the city's only doing the delta of the, of the forty-three and the hundred and twenty?
No, it's forty-nine hundred a year, forty-three is what it's built up to apparently, after multiple years.
Yes, yes. So, it's, it's, it's only, it's about forty-nine hundred annually.
So, it's about forty-nine hundred dollars annually, so basically, we would be saying that it would be the one twenty plus the forty-nine hundred annually if we did it all by fiscal year?
Yeah, if we wanted to add it above, we, we would say that we would be putting a hundred and twenty-five thousand instead of a hundred and twenty.
Instead of a hundred and twenty, okay. But we'd be using their five thousand-
Right.
From the residents to be a hundred and twenty-five thousand. But what's happening right now is that community action doesn't expend all the money that we give them, and so then what happens there?
Whether it's a hundred and twenty or a hundred and twenty-five, they're still not-
Right, because they don't expend everything, so that's what I wanna understand.
But there's a reason why they're not, we're trying to fix that.
Right.
Right, which we're gonna be doing.
So, no matter how you slice and dice it, it, it's just weird. I'm sorry, like, this is just very strange to me that we're like, yeah, we're gonna set aside those money, but then JK, all the money, all the donations we're getting from the community, we're gonna use that to lessen the blow of the one twenty that we set aside. Like, that's weird.
So, it'd be five thousand dollars. It'd be five thousand dollars.
And, and, and that's why it's highlighted, because I wanted to make sure that we had a conversation on this. It, it is a, one thing to, to look at, the hundred and twenty thousand that's being set aside, you know, for utility assistance, other ratepayers are paying for that, right? And on some level, someone is going to pay for this assistance. And, and so, the utility, these donations that are coming in about five thousand dollars a year is also helping to offset some of that cost.
I think it's, we really need to be transparent to the community to where their money's going. Like, I think that-
Or change it.
Yeah, right, but just regardless, like, I think if people are donating, like, no matter, like, what, word salad, whatever gymnastics we're doing right now to, like, justify the, what's happening right now, like, and, like, the community needs to know about that. And I don't care if it's fifty cents or five thousand dollars, like, I just think that, that it's, like, really unethical otherwise.
So, full, and, and this is, this is what I'm hearing, and this is what I understood, and I, I didn't understand this. So, so, the full one twenty that council allocates needs to go, obviously, to community action like it, like, like it does. But then also, if there's, if there's any of this money, and, and of course, because we don't always know, if it's an average of forty-nine hundred, somebody could donate more, somebody could decide to change it and go less, then it's the minimum of a hundred and twenty plus anything that we would get annually. We'd have to have a cutoff date for when we decide that, for when we actually send the funds. So, that can be done, with y'all giving us direction, that can be done. If this was the practice that's been done for I don't know how long, because again, I, no one's ever asked about this fund, and, and I have not ever checked into this fund. So, but now we know that this is here, let's, let's make sure that we get direction on how y'all want this to be handled going forward, so that we can make sure that that's what we do.
Mr. Scott has a question.
How does the, the practice that you all are doing here, is that across the board? Do you have same kind of, type of scenarios with other departments?
How, the only other one that I'm aware of that there's another donation is, is animal shelter.
No, and parks.
And parkland, and parkland. Those are the only other two.
Are those actually going to, this is kinda like that license plate fiasco a number of years ago that you get, you pay extra for the license plate, it's got something special on it, and those funds were not going to those, they weren't getting there.
It's just wild, because it's like, we always emphasize, like, donate local, donate local, and then it's like, yikes.
No, I understand the concern. I mean, it makes sense for y'all, yeah.
And, and I also just wanted to point out-
Hang on a second.
I just wanna point, that's why I said or. That forty-three thousand dollars is still sitting in an account. It has not been spent. I was just explaining that that was one, the view, you know, of how this money was being used. So, that money is still sitting there. It hasn't been named for a specific purpose. It's still sitting on an account, so-
So, we have given the full one twenty?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
That, so that's, that's, so that's what he, that's what he's saying.
Gotta start it with that, John.
So, that, so that's, yeah, so that's what he's saying, is that we have not used it-
No.
Right.
Because we've given the full one twenty.
Yes.
And then community actions always said, oh, we don't even expend the full one twenty.
Right.
So-
But things are gonna change after this RFP.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, are, are we, we all of the opinion that if somebody donates to help your neighbors in need, that the dollars oughta go to help their neighbors in need?
And, and, and I, I-
Is that a yes?
Yes, yes.
And we can start, I mean, the RFP can include this amount too, that we can go ahead and just make sure that this starts going. So, that was the other thing, is that, I mean, this is another pot.
We need to get to the RFP part, and it's already for eighteen, so.
Yeah, and, and I, and that's what I was gonna bring up. Let's just codify this as part of the RFP, and then we don't have to worry about it. My big, my big thing is, I, I have no problem with what you're doing. I think what staff is doing is perfectly fine. It was good, actually, right? But we need to codify this, so if there's turnover or something else happens, this is policy, right? And so, we just need to-
I'm not okay with what they were doing. I want that money going to the people.
But, but it can be confusing, and then, but I'm-
But, but this has nothing to do with the RFP. This is how, no, it doesn't.
It doesn't, and this, and this is-
The RFP's gonna be, who's gonna do it, what the process is.
But, and so, this is what-
And we'll figure out the money.
So, let me, let me just, because I understand, we're all getting more information about this, right? And it, yes, we're trying to process it. What, what I, what I'm hearing and what I'm understanding, just from what has happened in the past, is there's that hundred and twenty that goes to community action. Your budget has not been a hundred and fifteen, because we've, we've taken five thousand out of here and taken that to community action. You have budgeted a hundred and twenty, and they've been given a hundred and twenty.
But they don't actually-
But they don't spend it all, and so-
They, they're not actually given the money, are they? That's their budget, and as we, they authorize people, it gets spent down? Or does it, do they actually get a check? I don't think so.
We, we end up crediting the account of the, of the customer.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, they don't get that money.
Correct, but, so, yes, but I'm saying that it was budgeted for a hundred and twenty for community act. Now, if we had run into a situation where community action ran out of money, then this would have been an account that probably would have been utilized as, okay, we can use, but we have never been in that scenario. Now that we're gonna go into a scenario where you're doing the RFP, and we're hoping that all the money actually is getting expended.
Right.
Some to community action, some to all these. So, I think, yes, it's frustrating, but I'm glad that we're hearing about it now, because with this RFP, it's gonna be a game changer, because then we are hoping that all the monies get distributed, and you wanna make sure these are included.
But can we call it utility assistance money, not community action money?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. But that, but that's it. So, there wasn't, there wasn't like a shell game or anything like that, where money that was being given to us.
Right, so, I just wanna, again, to me, my frustration is not like, oh my gosh, you guys are just doing whatever. It's regardless of how much money community action is using or not using, I think that we have acknowledged that there's a clear gap or barrier to getting the money to the people in need. We have a lot of neighbors in need, right? And that's why it's frustrating to me, because I'm sitting here trying to process that we have forty-three thousand dollars in a piggy bank somewhere, and I'm getting phone calls all the time to, for people begging for utility assistance. Like, to the point where I'm texting Stephanie, being like, look, I pinky promise, swear to God, we will get the money in by Monday. Can you guys just, like, not disconnect this for, like, a single mom, right? Like, that, that's where my frustration is. I'm not trying to accuse anybody of, like, fraud. It's just a lot to process, that we have that much money, and simultaneously, so much need. And we're, we're just right now having this conversation.
Yeah, I think somebody was looking more at the dollars than the purpose. And just figuring out where, where did Cubby hole right those dollars, but I think we're gonna be spending them, so.
I, I hear, and everything that y'all are saying is completely valid.
Okay.
There, there's no argument. It's really just more of, now that we know this money, in addition to the money that we're talking about with community action, that's the money that's on the table for us to have for assistance.
We're gonna use the forty-three, let's move on.
I've got one question, mayor.
Put, put your, put, put your microphone on.
I do have one other question. On, I have several people that call me as well. And every time they call the city, they never tell them they have a community or a system donation fund. Why is that? And we've gone through this three, four years ago. And if y'all do tell them, what you tell them is this, go to community action, or go here, or go there. Is there a limit of how much y'all pay when it comes?
There's a limit of the number of times I can use it.
There's a number of times that they can, but, but my understanding, when Christine Avalos was here a few days ago, or a few meetings ago, she talked about the fact that that is part of their standard protocol. So, when they go through and somebody has an inability to pay, that they tell them that. Now, if we have specific date, time, that information, we can go back and pull the call to see what was said and what wasn't said, so that if we-
Oh, my gosh, somebody takes that.
So, I mean, if, if there is that, I mean, some, some do, and so, I think if they can tell us when that happened, then we can all-
At least last Tuesday morning before noon or mid-ten or something.
Right, then we can go and review the call. But that is their standard script, if you will, is that if someone's not, not able to pay, then they do have, okay, here are the, the assistance opportunities that are available that you can check into.
But it's time and point, we do have the money to assist those people.
Yes.
We, yes, but right now, the way that it is today, we do not administer a program that we directly assist. It goes the direction we've had from council as a body, is to do it through community action. That's gonna change with what we're talking about here. And so, that, they would not say, oh, we've got this money, that's forty-three thousand, and then they're making willy-nilly decisions about who gets it and who doesn't get it. We don't have a set criteria for that.
But what Sal is saying is that they're not being told that they can go anywhere else. That's what he's, that's what he says he's heard from people.
I mean, quite frankly, I have called, I've talked to people, I've, I've never once been told, uh, of you, do you need to explore utility, like, assistance? And I don't know, I always took it as maybe they're, they don't wanna, like, offend or something. But even when I'm, like, begging before, I felt more comfortable just, like, texting y'all to be like, look, look, what do I do? Um, it was, it was awkward, and I never identify myself, and I'm always speaking for somebody else. Usually, they're right next to me. Like, I, I don't think it's, like, on purpose or whatever, I just think that, I don't know what has to happen to get it to be an absolute priority, that if somebody is default, whether it's because they forgot or whatever, that they're offered that, right? Like, I just think that that's really important.
Absolutely.
And I'm not trying to throw nobody under the bus, but that's, like, my experience.
They don't need to be asking the question, is there help? They need to be offered that help, regardless if they can't pay their bill.
That's what I understand happens today.
Well, we're hearing not, so if you could check on it, we need to move on.
But that's what I was gonna say, is that let us check on it and find out, because-
We need to move on, but we asked this weeks ago. We asked the same thing weeks ago.
And I think the response was the same as it was today, and, and that was from Christine saying what they do and what they don't do.
We need you to check into it.
So, we can check into it further.
And this, uh, this fund, PEC, are they, even though they're not with the City of San Marcos, they're with PEC, do we still pay those people?
No, only for electric, uh-
Elect, yeah, just wanna make sure that everybody understands that.
Yeah, because you would, you would, you would have, right, but just for the public, you would have utility ratepayers for the City of San Marcos paying for another utility.
Right, and that applies also to, uh, what do you call that, uh, community action?
Correct. Yeah, we could help them with their water, just not with their electric.
Okay.
If, if they're in water CCN, yes.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Let's continue.
Yes, ma'am, and just one other item to point out on this slide is, right now, the donation amount is only for one time, and we are currently exploring the ability to set it up for a recurring donation amount. That may help bring in donations, if somebody could add a little bit.
I, I, I would do that, because we figured out how to do that five-dollar thing, so surely we can figure this one out.
Yes.
Okay, let's go.
Okay, then that brings us to the utility assistance RFP. And we'll, the proposed timeline for this is that some-
Let's back up. Can we just a moment and talk about, what we're talking about here is a request for proposal from other agencies-
Correct.
To see if we can have more agencies, it may be one more, maybe two more, whatever, who are able to perhaps move faster than what community action is, because when you fill out all the forms and the federal application, it could be two to three weeks. And we're looking for some things, folks that can move faster. This was at several of us' questions, and so, that's why there's an RFP going out. And that's what we're talking about, is what's part of that RFP. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Just need to make it clear. Thank you.
Yes. And, and the proposed timeline for this, we're estimating by the end of November, we would be able to get that RFP out. And since the RFP will be out during the holidays, we're recommending that we would keep it open until January to give the organizations plenty of time to respond.
When in January?
Probably mid-January, early to mid-January.
Early won't help you, mid might be.
Yes, so-
Or hardly won't, early won't help them.
Correct. So, so probably more like a mid-January. And the RFP will have different components, and that, these slides are broken into those components with the recommendations. This first is just with agency information, and with this, you can see in bullet points the types of information that we'd be asking for from the organizations, you know, the hours of operations, their online presence, their social media presence, any kind of prior experience providing utility assistance, the number of staff with relative experience that would be providing this assistance, their community engagement and marketing effort, how they're gonna be able to get the program out so that all the residents are aware that this program is available. And, you know, reporting capability, that was something that we talked a lot about at the last meeting as well, is so that we can keep track of the applications received, approved, and denied, as well as the reason for denial if it is denied. Any kind of retention policy that the organization has for those applications, in case we ever need to or request to review those. And any other external funding sources that they, they have to provide emergency assistance.
So, this is, we're asking them for information, is how you can meet these. Do we have somewhere that we are going to ask them, and how much have you already been paying in utility assistance out of other types of funding? Can we ask them that? How many, how many accounts and how much?
Is that what, is that what this last bullet is getting to, the external funding sources that they've received to provide emergency assistance?
No, I wanna know how much they have actually provided.
Oh, how much they have paid out?
Yeah, we, we're already doing two hundred a year at X thousand dollars.
Okay.
And do you want them to differentiate between San Marcos utilities versus, like, people like me who have San Marcos and water? Or how, if-
I think that would be a good idea. Yes, good idea.
But also, can you guys explain to me one more time, like, the rationale for the money that we give community action is only for San Marcos utilities?
Yes, ma'am.
And so, I guess, right, so I guess my question is, the assistance then is not to get our neighbors their direct basic needs met. It's to give us, is to get us the money that is owed to us, right? Because there's one, like, one is an investment in our neighbors so that they can be contributing members of the community. Like, we don't care who is your water or electricity provider, we're trying to get your basic needs met. And then the other is us just recycling our own money through a middleman. That's how I see it, so.
This, this is a philosophical question, because if you have people-
Your microphones, I'll leave your microphones on.
Sure, thanks for letting me know that, mayor. This is a philosophical question that council has to answer and give us policy direction on. Because those are not one and the same when it comes to, you can have utility customers who are not City of San Marcos residents. They may not live in the City of San Marcos, they may only have our water, they may only have our electric. And so, you, when you keep those as separate businesses, they're not paying taxes to the city, they only get their utilities from the city. And so, then are, are they responsible, their rates, because somebody's gotta pay for it, whether it's us or whoever.
I'm not talking about them, I'm talking about people like in, in my neighborhood.
So, if you have people who are just buying city water, wastewater, or electric, and they are not members of the City of San Marcos community, then they could be, their bills could be going to pay, because it's gonna be those, that revenue that pays for whatever we do with utility assistance, that revenue's gonna be going to pay for somebody who may not necessarily be a, a taxpayer of the City of San Marcos. So, those, that's, that's the thing that has to-
I don't see taxpayers being part of this, because these are business utilities. But to me, it's got to, and it's gonna be what, like, what Ms. Garcia said, we're recycling the money back to ourselves, but we're helping people meet that. It's, it's our utility customers. So, for me, if they're not, if their electric is through another route, I was not thinking that that would be part of this, because I don't see how we can use this money to pay Blue Monitor PEC.
So, that's, that's part of the philosophical, but there is, I mean, somebody's, my, my thing is, is that, so, I'm a City of San Marcos resident, but I do not have water, wastewater through the city or, or electric, right? Because I'm in PEC's CCN. So, I couldn't pay, if I could not pay my electric bill, would you want somebody in PC, PEC paying for me and thinking that I'm their neighbor, because they're trying to help me who's on a hard time?
No, I would, why?
No, I would want this, our community to help you pay your bill.
But, but that wouldn't be what happens, because if, that same scenario that I'm just talking about would be the same scenario if PEC had a community assistance fund, and it was being paid by their ratepayers, and they were going to pay the City of San Marcos for me.
Right, so I guess, the way I see it is, is this an investment in our neighbors to get their direct basic needs met, or is this for us to give ourselves, the city, more money? Because if it, like, I just want us to keep it real, like, when we talk about utility assistance, it, we should make it very clear to our neighbors and everybody else and our constituents that, yeah, we allocate a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, but it's just to give us our money back, because that has been a, a community, like, concern, like, what do you mean, like, so, as we get bigger and more and more folks, like, are in the situation where, like, they might be in Bluebonnet or somewhere else, then they're just like, not, they don't count, right? Like, we, we're not gonna go pay their bill from someone else. It's like, I don't, I feel like I'm not articulating myself well, but.
But do Bluebonnet and PEC, and that's something that I don't know that we have a good answer, do they have utility assistance programs that we can help get them to?
That's what I'm looking for right now, and I don't know.
I feel like that's like not even the point, like, the point is, like, I just want us to keep it real, like, this, there's other entities who will give money, and it's like, we're gonna give money to help any of my constituents pay their utility bill, regardless of whether we own the utilities or not, right? That's not what we're doing. We're, we're saying we're gonna allocate this money, and we're gonna give it to people who are in need, yes, but only if it's gonna come back to us, not, like, we're not gonna pay anybody else, like, vaya con Dios, you're on your own on that one. Yes, is that, is that what's happening?
That's, that's the way it, it currently is, because it, it's not to give us more money, but somebody is, the reason I keep saying somebody's paying for it is because you still have your bottom line costs that you have to cover as a utility, and you set your rates, and you set your revenues, and all those things in your budget to try to make sure that you can make payroll and you can do all those things. If you aren't able to do that, because you're paying the money out to other places, then that can affect the service levels that we provide to, to our ratepayers. So that's, that's the part where, where I'm saying, as far as why that has historically been that way, again, y'all can do something different.
We're talking about the business, or is it a social service agency? But here's a thought, what if the one-twenty is limited to our customers and the, uh, donations, five thousand a year? That's a different pool, that's seen more like a social service that can be paid out to people who are in San Marcos, but they have other utilities. I, I can do that, I can't do the one-twenty to PEC or Bluebonnet. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I understand the business part, but I just, I just think it's important for transparency, for people to understand the rationale on this, right? It's, th- this is why we don't do what some other cities do, or don't do, uh, when it comes to giving money. Yeah.
Well, it's got, you've gotta look at the source of the funds. So.
Sure.
Ms. Blaisen?
Mayor, I really like your idea. I, I was kinda trying to wrap my head around how we could kinda do this, because, look, we cannot take a hundred and twenty from our utility, uh, program and give it to PEC, I, I can't do that. But I do think we might be on to something with, that the donations are more community-based, and I, I don't think, um, that would be the, and we're not talking large amounts, but it would give you some flexibility if there was. I did see that PEC does have a utility assist, I don't know what, what, I didn't, I didn't read into it, but I did see it in here. I would be open to your suggestion, mayor.
Mayor, the only comment on that is that, going back to an earlier comment for transparency, now the people making those donations probably need to be informed whether those donations are staying.
That was gonna be the next thing, is that we tell them that.
Or that, yeah, our utilities or others, but again, just, that's a disclosure or whatever that you'd have to provide to people.
And, and I, and I would like to see that be San Marcos resident, like, addresses, and they might be city limits maybe, but even.
They would have to be our customer in other ways.
Yes, thank you, mayor, that, that's.
They, they've got to be a utility customer of ours.
Yes, one of them, and, and, and it would provide some flexibility.
So their utility bill might, is gonna need two payments. A sum is gonna come from the one-twenty, and the electric is, would come from the, the donations. Makes a little more work, but.
I like that, because that does give some volume of money to these people who have multiple CCNs that may not be able to get the assistance for one, but get the other. And, and I do think the donations, then, it'd be qualified of, this could go to any utility of a San Marcos address, and then that would be a qualifying thing for the donations.
Could I get a write-up via email, not right now, obviously, like, after this, on the, everything we just discussed about the rationale and the, this is why we give, this is why we are gonna use our money to pay San Marcos utilities, right? I think that would be helpful for me to explain to my neighbors.
But that's a council, that's a council decision.
Right, well, I wanna know, I wanna write up of what is right now, right? Not in the future, right? Like, so I feel like, if it already exists, like, does that make sense?
It should just be the policy, right? The policy for our, I mean, we could give the.
For right now, if somebody who's in Bluebonnet, but our city, uh, water, if they ask for utility assistance, what are they getting from currently community action? Is the whole utility bill paid, in which case they gotta be writing a check to Bluebonnet, or?
But it's, but.
They just get a credit from us, right?
Just to make sure I'm clarifying, Councilmember Garcia's request, you're, you're wanting the policy for community assistance.
Right.
Right, that just has what, what they have to do whenever there is something, like, what's the criteria, all of that, right?
That goes on the list of things you're gonna provide.
Right, and also, and like, the rationale, right? So if a neighbor's like, well, I don't get it, this is our tax, this is our tax dollars, like, if you went and asked, um, you know, just, let's do like a eight, if you went into the HEB and you went and you asked a bunch of people who live here, hey, would you want you, or your, like, the utility assistance program to just go to San Marcos, or to go to, like, if you have Bluebonnet or whatever? Like, I've had neighbors say, if you asked us, we'd be down to, like, if it were up to us, it'd be like, no, help us in general, but how do I, you gave a good rationale, like, I'm, I'm understanding the numbers, business part. What I need to be able to articulate to my neighbors is what you said in a concise way. Does that make sense? Instead of being like, hey, go to the meeting and go to this timestamp, does that make sense?
Yes, because it, because one thing I'll differentiate with what you just said is that these are our tax dollars, it's not our tax dollars that are paying for this.
Right, 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 but the average person.
Doesn't know that.
Right.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Does that make sense?
I'm not sure we respond with ratepayers, not tax.
And that's what, that's the way I would, and that's the way I would put that out, so yes, that's.
Like, I think it's, yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna go Mr. Gonzalez first, I'm coming to y'all next, as to what your thoughts are.
Of this five thousand a year?
Uh, I'll come to you in a minute, Mr. Gonzalez.
Personally, I like the idea that you came up with earlier, uh, Stephanie, uh, second would be the option that Mayor gave as well. You know, those are about the only things, I, I'm really bothered.
Well, what is your understanding of what Stephanie offered?
She said so much that, in a sense, she was saying that everything has to come back to the city, or money that we give, pay out, was that correct? Yeah, uh, it's like when you get a loan, when you, you're, you're on your house or something, and I take out a loan for my credit retirement, I gotta pay them back, but I'm paying myself back at the same time. If that makes any sense, okay.
Okay, what is your preference again? Because I'm not sure what it was that we're talking about, but what's the question? Just, just specify it, instead of saying what Stephanie said.
Okay, just where the money will stay, will pay back into our piggy bank, that whatever we give out will come back to us.
And wouldn't go to other, to pay other utility providers.
The one-twenty and the, um, donations, and that we do not pay another provider.
I don't wanna pay another provider.
No, no, okay.
They got their own resources, I believe, this should help.
Okay.
And, and Mr. Gonzalez, is, is that include if we clarify when those donations happen, that that could potentially go to someone who isn't a San Marcos utility, maybe a partial San Marcos utility customer, but has a San Marcos address?
Yeah, I think that's, uh, they have the rationale of that as well.
Now, wait, you just, that's just different from what you just said.
No, I clarified, I clarified what he said.
Right, so, when you say, I don't wanna pay another provider, I get that, but I did like the mayor's suggestion, because if, I'm just trying to like reframe it a bit, if we use that other funds, it's not necessarily, how, I'm not viewing it as we're paying another provider, I'm viewing it as we're helping our neighbor keep their utilities on regardless, and I get the philosophy for the other number, right? But the smaller fund, if we're transparent to the, the neighbor donations, like, but that's just me.
I think most people that donate would be fine with wherever the money was going, as long as it was a San Marcos utility.
And I think.
Or a San Marcos address is the key for that.
Because, because they're making a donation to help somebody, and that's their intent.
But I do think we need to tell them that it's potentially going to another entity.
That's fine, we can do that. Okay, so I'm still not sure what your answer is.
Um, I'm okay with the extra, with the five thousand dollars.
With the donations from individuals, you're okay with those going to PEC and Bluebonnet?
As long as they know it's written on their, yeah, I'm okay.
And to the mayor's point, they would have to have, like, one account with us.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, so like, I have water, but utility, yeah.
Yeah.
It's very confusing.
Scott, where are you?
I'm behind you.
You spray there?
Yeah, put a nasteric, saying, you know, this could also define, you know, other local utilities.
I think that's a, I think that's a fair approach, because I think the other way is, I think it is too, because, because the other one is, is ratepayer money, you know, that's going, and so people are, that, you would think it'd go back into the, into the system, but if it's the five thousand, you know, per year, then that, if it is really just somebody trying to help their neighbors,
Well, and I, and I thought about somebody, my, my thought was, if somebody's making a donation, they very well may not have both utilities from us to begin with anyway, right? So some of that money, some of those might already.
It's a donation, we just need to tell them, and we've got four, and we need to move on. We, we don't need to talk about this all day, because it's four forty-three, we still have other things we need to do. So if we're done on this one, next, oh, I'm sorry, we're on the RFP.
Yes.
So, are y'all good with asking them these questions, and are y'all good with asking them, uh, how much utility assistance are you doing now, number of people? Number of people, number of payments, which can be different.
Right.
And the dollar amount, the full dollar amount. Okay, so we're just gonna ask them, and, and they may not be now, and that's okay, but if they already are, I think it would be important to know that.
I would also like to see their application, like, what, what is, I know, community action, it's like, we can only help them X amount of time, or whatever, whatever. I'm curious as to like, that, right? Because when we talk about equity, it's like, what is the equations that they're using? I know community action sometimes, it's like, well, we have so many other programs that we, it, it's unfeasible to curate an application just for the City of San Marcos, but I think that's a missed opportunity, because they, a lot of their applications is like, the requirements of like their federal money used. Does that make sense? Like, we don't have to be as restrictive.
Sure, yeah.
So it would be helpful, or, or even if they're open to, uh, curated application that we agree on, right? The parameters.
Actually, more, not the next slide, but the next one.
Thank you, mayor.
Okay, so, let's go to the next slide, this is what we're asking them to be able to do.
Yes.
Which is to customize their application, and application, they can have their others, but this is one for this particular use, and then monthly reporting. That sounds reasonable to me, what do y'all think? Are we good?
Good, good.
Okay, um, so now, and just as a reminder, this is the current customer eligibility criteria as it is administered through community action now, correct? No?
This is just the proposed criteria that we would use for this, um.
Oh, my understanding, this was current.
The, I don't believe so.
Do we have.
It is, it is.
Okay, do we have criteria, or is it based on community actions criteria? Through the federal programs, because, or the state program, whatever it is that they've got that's like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pay this? Bring us some facts, my dear.
Um, Grisipares Carey, Diversity Equity Inclusion Coordinator. So these are, to my understanding, what council agreed upon, um, with that agreement with community action. Where theirs deviate is.
A hundred years ago that none of us were part of that?
We had our hands tied anyways.
Yes, ma'am. Um, with community actions programs, CAPP in particular, it's a hundred and fifty percent of the federal poverty level, that really is, um, the distinction between the two criteria.
So where did this criteria come from?
This is what the agreement with community action is currently between for the one hundred and twenty.
You said one fifty?
Right, CAPP, the Comprehensive Electric.
I understand that, this says two fifty.
Right, so our threshold is larger. So whereas CAPP, you have to be at one, up to one hundred and fifty.
This is what we're talking about for us?
Yes, ma'am.
So it's not what community action usually looks at?
No, this is what community action looks at.
This is when, so when an application comes into community action, um, to my understanding, their process is, they look at that income. So if they're at the one hundred and fifty percent, then that qualifies buys them for CAPP, and so they follow that federal program. If it is from the one fifty-one to two fifty, then that's when they look at our program.
So this is our criteria?
Yes, ma'am.
It would be super helpful to have that written out as well, right? Like, it's really hard to follow, and again, neighbors ask, like, why don't I qualify, or, why, da, 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 da? Because then it's like, okay, if they do the other program, but that they still only have twice per year, does that mean two for that program, this program, or two for community action overall, or?
Two for our program. So with CAPP, you can qualify for up to two thousand four hundred dollars, so there are community members who, at the beginning of the year, could go ahead and submit their application, receive that assistance, and then as that amount dwindles, they can come back and request from our program.
Okay. So they can get what they get there and two more.
Yes.
From us.
Yes.
Is there, is there any way we can have this, like, written out somewhere, or is it already in the packet, I just didn't like drill down?
It's there, on the slide.
Well, no, what you just described right now, so like.
Oh, I sent, if you'd send that to us also.
Like, just like, help me walk through, like, if I'm a neighbor, and I'm trying to apply and I'm calling, right, okay, if I call the utilities, they're gonna send me to community action, community action's been answered phone, and they're gonna be like, give me your information, and then they're like, oh, actually, you qualify for this, whatever, thingy.
Right.
Then they have the opportunity to do that X amount of years. But our neighbors are then, are they told, you know, in the future, you can qualify for the San Marcos one then, or?
I don't know if at that point they are, so we can get some clarification.
Gotcha.
And I, and I do believe that some of our community members who are on PEC or, or Bluebonnet are then able to have this assistance go from the CAPP, right?
Because that's a state program.
Exactly.
Like, I'm, just like, little flow chart, like, that'd be so helpful, like, you know what I mean?
That would be good. My question is, what's the definition of elderly? Is it over sixty-five, in which case we need to say over sixty-five?
We could clarify, I believe that community action would go with sixty, but I don't wanna say the wrong thing, so.
Whatever it is, we just need a number, elderly is not definitive enough.
Okay.
I'm good, I was scared.
Is council interested in sixty or sixty-five for us to go ahead?
I, we just need to pick a number, what are they using?
I would have to check my notes.
Let's just figure out what it is and be specific.
What is currently being done?
Yes.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Okay, are y'all good with this?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, this is true.
Yes, yes, okay.
Honestly, no, like, I think, this is a copy and paste from a conversation that was had a long time ago, and we don't really have, like, a rhyme or reason or rationale on how this ended up. Like, I think that that, like, it deserves more fl- like, fleshing it through, like, I've said this on multiple occasions, for so many of our programs, like, we're like, oh, my gosh, gold star, we set aside all this money for da, 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 da. But then, the reality is often that our neighbors don't qualify for certain money, and if this is our opportunity to make it very equitable and intentional, I think it merits a more, like, more of a conversation, then yeah, just like slap on a sixty to sixty-five number. Oh, what, what does disabled mean, copy and paste, you know, like, what?
I just wanna know what it is, because when they get an application, there's something that they're looking at.
I mean, yes, specificity is important, but intentionality is important. Like, if not, we're just replicating the inequalities we're seeking to address by not sitting here and being like, these are some best practices, or what are the realities of our community? Like, what other, what other, um, situations would merit something that's like, should be listed under that criteria, right? Like, what are the trans, this body didn't even know that they were disconnecting after hours, like, I'm not trying to shame you guys, but it's also like, let, let's, let's learn from, not mistakes, but like, maybe oversights, and be more intentional moving forward. So my answer is no, I think that we need to sit down and actually unpack the realities of our community and how we can make it more equitable.
My, my guess is they pull some federal or state requirements, and that's what we did. We can review this, but we don't need this in order to put the RFP out, correct?
This would be the, um.
This would be the eligibility criteria that we would be providing them, that we want them to follow.
But that's after they get.
Correct.
Is this required in order to put the RFP on the street?
I don't think that, no, a- actually, would it be, because, uh.
Say, we're going to provide you that, you're going to have to buy, buy it, and?
We can just craft the language that way.
Okay.
I, I.
I'm trying to get the RFP out while we maybe have a future conversation on this, so we can get help to people sooner.
I mean, could part of the RFP be that these are some suggested criteria, that we would be interested in what they would propose to it? So that there's something like that, just because then, there may be some that specialize in this more, that can really give us more guidance on what they think, and so, maybe some stuff that we don't even think about.
That's a great idea.
So. Make that a separate process.
It's secondary to it.
The, that, the RFP is the RFP, and we're also taking a survey as to what you think about this. Because there may be some people who don't want to do the RFP, they don't feel like they can, they can handle that, who can provide us some good information here, so that, to me, that's a survey.
I, I wasn't, I was thinking of it in a different way, I was thinking of it as, these are some suggested eligibility criteria, and then, but we would be open to them doing a proposal of some additional alternative criteria that could be considered as part of their proposal process. So, that's what I was thinking, is that these are, these are some suggested, but let's, let's get them to give us what their proposed criteria would be.
I'm, I'm good with that, but there may be some people who aren't going to do an RFP, who could also provide some.
Oh, yeah, for the, for the future.
On a survey, it's really a survey.
Yeah.
But I, I, I don't mind if this goes in there, as this is kind of what we're looking at.
Yeah, just some suggested criteria.
But I don't want that to be a showstopper for somebody to not complete the RFP.
That's what I, that's what I'm feeling, is that these, these are some suggested eligibility criteria, however, we, we were, we would be open to you submitting.
Exactly.
Your proposed criteria of how you would administer if you were awarded, so that that can all be considered as part of the.
And by the way, even if you're not going to do the RFP, we would be interested in your opinion, if this is something that you do at your agency.
There, there's a lot of different utilities out here, and, and just even looking at PEC's program here, some of the stuff is best practices, right? It's kind of similar, I'm just glancing over, that some of these organizations might be dealing with one of these entities that has done something a little different, be interesting to hear if they've.
That would be a good question, the people that are doing this now, and I know they are, are they paying Bluebonnet and PEC? And I'm guessing they are, um, and, um, and we need to see what programs they have, so that their programs are being exhausted first.
Yeah, and I, I hadn't gotten too far into Bluebonnets here, but, um, I, I do think it's going to end up being pretty similar, it looks like to me. But it would be interesting if they have any suggestions, or something that they thought might work that no one has implemented yet, right?
Right.
But that's a question to ask them on the, you know, are you doing already? And the other one is, what utility agencies, well, utility companies are you paying? And again, how much pays you, how much did you pay Bluebonnet?
Yes.
And I don't know if there's another one close enough, I think anybody that's San Marcos dressed can be on those.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you, Tiffany, for that recommendation. I think it's like, when people call me, it's like, there's high priority, like, a recent life event, like, a spouse has passed away, or just got injured, or, um, single caregiver, yeah. I think it's, it's important to recognize things, or like, pregnant women, like, there's other things that, it's, there's, yeah, y'all know what I'm talking about.
Yes. That, that's why I started asking about this, because somebody said, well, you know, you do whatever, and I'm going, no, 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 I'm talking about somebody that thought they could pay their bill, and because of something that happened, you can't, so you didn't have the time to go through Community Action, which takes three weeks, up to three weeks. Yep, things, life happens.
It, it does look like Bluebonnet does not have their own program, they have a list here of every, all the providers and each network.
Yeah, if y'all could find that out and get it to us, because we, we may not be able to find everything right now. Are y'all, are we done with this one?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Mayor, the, the final slide was just the, um, was the direction, the staff on the, um, recommended criteria, which you provided along the way.
I think we've done that.
Yes, ma'am, and if there's any other direction you wanted to provide us about anything we discussed.
I think we've done that.
Yes.
Thank you, okay, and thanks to everyone here to provide additional information for us, and we will go to item three.
The City Council will convene in executive session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Government Code. One, Section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-two, Deliberation Regarding Real Property, to deliberate regarding the possible purchase or lease of land for the development of affordable workforce housing. Two, Section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, Consultation with Attorney. A, to receive legal advice regarding available options for the addition of projects under the River Bridge Public Improvement District, authorized under terms of a settlement agreement with the original developer of the land within the boundaries of the district. B, to discuss the role of the city attorney related to boards and commissions.
Looking for a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Gleason, uh, let's, let's vote.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Hi, I'm Jessica.
Mayor Houston, Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza, and Mr. Prater.
Aye.
All right, we're going to an executive session at four fifty-eight. Council, bio. We have returned from our executive session, which we concluded at five forty-nine. Uh, we are ending the three o'clock meeting. Ms. Trevino, do we have anybody for question and answer?
No, ma'am.
With press in public, in that case, I will take a motion to adjourn. Uh, motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez. We will vote to adjourn this meeting.
Ms. Garza, Mayor Houston.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason, Mr. Mendoza, and Mr. Prater.
Aye.
And Mr. Scott.
Aye.
All right, so we will adjourn this meeting at five fifty-one, and we will start our regular meeting at six o'clock.